Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. It's Monday, July 29th, seven o'clock, and we're here at the Board of Supervisors chambers. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and first we're, the clerk will do the roll call.
Thank you. Barry McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ernest Taylor. Mark Kyris.
Here.
The next set of people will be the City of Hanford, Martin Devine. Lou Martinez. Vice Mayor Mark Kyris.
Here.
Mayor Travis Payden. The next set is the Kings County Board of Supervisors, Joe Nevs. Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We're on to item number two, unscheduled appearances, and I believe we're going to have, I'll just read what our protocol is. Any person may directly address the board at this time. Concerning any item that has been described in the notice for the meeting, two minutes are allowed for each item. Anyone would like to address the board? I believe there's a mic on both sides.
And I do have speaker cards. The first speaker is Mike LaSalle.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting before the Kings County Water District? Meeting of the Board of Supervisors, meeting of the City Council. I'd like to know who I'm addressing.
The Mid Kings River. The Mid Kings River GSA.
My name is Mike LaSalle. I'll let you know that I am a landowner and farmer and pumper within the GSA. I'm very concerned about what this notice of this meeting seems to be proposing. So I'm here to raise my concerns about it. To kind of back up a little bit, I know we're limited to two minutes. And I've appeared in meetings with you before, Barry. And you've never limited me to two minutes before. But this is a pretty important matter, and I would ask you to please be a little bit relaxed. It's a very complicated topic, and there are a number of things I think we need to cover, and I think everybody needs to understand, and I don't think two minutes is going to do it justice. So I'm going to move forward as fast as I can, but it's probably going to take more than two minutes. All right, going back in 2019, your GSA held a series of meetings in which you were developing your groundwater sustainability plan, and I think I attended 10 of those. And you hired an engineering firm. I probably don't remember exactly what they were paid, but they were paid, in my recollection, somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars to collect data, analyze the situation, and come up with a proposed plan. And I was very impressed with the work that they did. I remember the last meeting where they gave their final report. And what they had concluded by looking at 30 years of data is that the overdraft in our GSA was about .4 acre foot per acre per year. And I remember thinking, oh, that means we're going to have to cut our irrigation by .4 acre feet. No, no, they, I got corrected. I said, no, what they have decided by looking at historical records that every so often there's wet years with plenty of flood release water. And most of it goes the ocean. So if we could just increase the total number of acres that the Kings County Water District has as sinking basins and take advantage of those wet years to sink water, we can sink enough water to balance the books. And their opinion and conclusion was they didn't recommend that we needed to cut our water pumping. The other thing to keep in mind is the legislation. I've looked, I've read the legislation, Sigma. And it gives us 20 years to stabilize our water table. But it goes further than that. It says if at the end of 20 years you need more time, if you can show due cause, you can ask for another five years. And then it goes on and says, if you can show due cause, you can ask for another five years. And then it goes on and says, if you need more time and can show due cause, you can get more time. So I think what that tells you is that whoever drafted this legislation understood that our economic system in this valley is very dependent on agriculture, and cutting back on water pumping is going to probably have economic consequences. People are going to grow fewer crops, have less money to spend. They're going to fire people. Less fertilizer is going to be bought, less seeds is going to be bought, your tractors are going to be bought. It's going to have huge repercussions. We really need the time to slowly move toward this target of stabilizing our water table. And your, as I recall, your engineers in their plan said that in their expert professional opinion, that approach, if you follow it, will result in the end target. And I've noticed in the petition that the Farm Bureau filed against the Department of Water Resources after they took that action to put us on probation. They said that the Department of Water Resources took the position, we've got to immediately start stabilizing our and they point out that's not what the law says. In other words, they're really acting outside of their authority given to them by the law. Then if you also look at the behavior of the Department of Water Resources, as I understand it, when you submitted that plan to them in January of 2020, the Department of Water Resources did not give you a letter of insufficiency for two years. So they, they, they worked on it for two years. And then, as I understand, you tried to accommodate them, you developed a a revised plan and submitted it to them, and then once the ball was in their court, it took them seven months to get back to you and say, no, it's still insufficient. And then they started the ball rolling toward putting you on probation or putting the GSA on, or the sub-basin on probation. So if you look at the Department of Water Resources behavior, they too do not show any urgency. So I was absolutely shocked when I saw this notice of this meeting that because of certain actions taken by the Kings County Water District that we now need to consider changing the structure and putting the Kings County Board of Supervisors on our GSA. You know, I look around here, I see a bunch of farmers, and they're mostly in the back standing up. What do I see in the early rows with signs that say, this is reserved for? I see a bunch of governmental employees and bureaucrats. And I see, you know, two-minute time limits. Does this kind of tell us that you know, we might not be real happy with the future if we let you guys proceed as being, as being proposed? I think we stakeholders, namely farmers who have the greatest stake in this thing, we want we want board members that own land. And we want board members that will fight the state and make the state prove that they have the legal right to what they're claiming we need to do. So I'm very disappointed in the Kings County Water District Board. I realize you were not happy when your assessment, which I think you asked for it, you asked for way too much. All you did is set off a hornet's nest. And that election ended in being defeated. And then about a month later, you get a letter from Kings County Water District asking you guys to resign. So I can understand you were pissed off, you know? And then the next thing I understand you do is you withdraw Kings County Water District from this GSA as a member. You know, the Kings County Water District has a long, long tradition. It was formed in the 1950s by Lyman Griswold and Cheryl Shoemaker. They'd be rolling over in their graves if they saw what you've done. And then to make matters worse, although you had the right to resign, you guys resigned as GSA members, leaving four vacancies. I mean, that's like being invited into somebody's house to a friend, and he insults you. And you get mad and you leave, and on the way out the door, you throw a stick at dynamite in the house? Come on, guys, you can do better than that. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mike.
The next speaker is Johnny Gailey. The next speaker is Kimber Regan.
First of all, I figured there would be a lot more people here speaking, so I'm a little nervous, okay? I just became aware of this meeting this afternoon. I, a little bit of background, I'm a real estate broker, have lived in this area all of my life. My dad and my brother, my dad and my brother were, my brother worked for Ad Commissioner's Office his entire career since he got out of President of State until he retired. My dad was a chemical advisor to the farmers and knows most of the farmers. So I grew up in an ag-related industry, okay? I do know, I'm aware of how bad it's hurting the farmers and how bad the water situation is hurting everybody. There's been choices that have been made regarding water in our area that have been allowed. However legally or whatever, there's maybe should have been laws put in ahead of time or prior, but the water is basically being stolen from our valley here, and it's affecting houses. It's affecting farmers. It's affecting all of the different communities here. And if we don't take and do something, it is, we're going, we're going to be in a dying area. Everything, you know, we have to have water. And unless we stop allowing it to be routed around Kings County and be sold out of here, whatever water comes to us, we need it for here. We need to take and stop letting it be used in other areas. And people that are making choices and everything, they need to take and have those those focuses to where it happens to where all the farmers, all the families, everybody's protected. And unless we have people on the board that are taking and protecting them, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the GSA boards, county supervisors, city council, everybody, everybody needs to protect and be making choices that protects everybody here. Not, and need to have backbone balls, whatever you want to call it. We've got to take a fight and take and make it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone else.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address? Okay, well. We'll move on to item number three, the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency A, B, and C, I think we can put into one motion, that's the approval of the minutes of the November 14th, 23, and December 12th, 23, and then of the special meeting of April 23 of '24. Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept those minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider the accepting of resignation of General Counsel Ray Carlson. And are you motion to do that?
I think we're going to bundle the two resignations together. We're, as this is the last official meeting of this version of the board, just to kind of set this up. The, the staff is basically just Manager Mills and Attorney Carlson. We've both prepared resignation statements anticipating that you'll be considering the revised and amended Joint Powers Authority that will formalize Kings County Water District's exit from the Mid Kings River GSA. So both of the resignations anticipate that action kind of as the last step in this current form of the Board of Directors for the Mid Kings River GSA. So they're, they're for your consideration, and then you guys will be on your own for the next step.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I'll make a motion, accept items D and E, the resignation of General Counsel Ray Carlson and General Manager Dennis Mills from the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, accept their resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item F, to consider approving the amended and restated agreement for the governance of GPA, JPA, known as the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency Joint Powers Authority.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and again, the, the major
Altogether.
Yeah, the major thing that's just being considered here is the amended, the revised and amended Joint Powers Authority removes Kings County Water District from the governance of the, of the GSA so that it's just the City of Hanford and the Kings and Kings County as the remaining Joint Powers Authority members.
Okay, so is there a motion to do that, Dan?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Make that challenge in court. And of course, there are a number of things courts can look at. Did you give proper legal notice to all the stakeholders? I don't think you did. Number two, can you show that the action you're taking, you're discharging the fiduciary obligation that you owe to us landowners? Can you show substantial evidence that's going to appear in this administrative record that would justify the action that you might be considering right now? Consider that at your vote.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, I think the part of this current form of the board is over, and now we're going to transition to the City of Hanford's City Council.
Yes.
My name is Travis Payden, Mayor of the City of Hanford, and I call the, this meeting to order of the Hanford City Council. The item on the agenda for A is to consider approving the amended and restated agreement for the governance of the Joint Powers Authority known as the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency Joint Powers of Authority. At this time, I'd like to ask council if there are any questions or comments that they would like to state at this time.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a brief comment. I think with the recent activities in the last couple of months regarding the Kings County Water District and their choice to remove themselves as a member agency of the GSA, it left some great conversation, I guess, between the city and the county to try to, how to keep this Groundwater Sustainability Agency together and establishing some new protocols and guidelines in which to move forward and, and cover the, you know, all the concerns that are currently out there. So I, at this time, I just, I'd like to just thank the Board of Supervisors, staff, Chuck Kenny particularly as well for their, for their hard work and, and transitioning this over in the last 60 days since the notice was provided. Challenging, of course, no doubt, but the important thing is that I think you're going to see that with the current structure or the structure that we hopefully will form here tonight, between the City of Hanford and the Kings, Kings County Board of Supervisors establish some uniformity, some you know, direction moving forward and some positive steps, which have been major concerns regarding the GSA in, in the recent months. So I'd like to thank them and staff for their hard work in getting us where we are tonight.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, entertain a motion to approve the amended and restating the agreement.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second on the table?
Second.
Second, all right, so we have a motion and a second? All in favors?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposition? All right, moving on to item 4B, is it considering appointing a city council member to sit as a voting member on the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency Joint Powers of Authority? At this time, I'd like to open up for nominations.
Would like to nominate Mark Kyris.
All right, so we have a nomination of Vice Mayor Mark Kyris on the floor. Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none. At this time, I'd like to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations. You were on the committee. And at this time, we will conclude the Hanford City Council meeting and move on to the Board of Supervisors.
Hey, good evening. This is the Kings County Special Meeting of Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
We already did a roll. I was like, oh.
All right.
Room me.
First item up is consider approving the amended and restated agreement for the governance of the Joint Powers Authority known as Mid Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency Joint Powers Authority. I have a motion to accept.
Movement, Chair.
Good by Supervisor Neves.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
Yeah.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves as the Mid King River Ground, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Kyris to come up here and please sit with us.
Excuse me, Doug, before we move to sit as the Mid Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to appoint council today and appoint.
We are.
We are.
Okay.
We need, we need a full board, and Mark Kyris is on that.
I'm jumping ahead, thank you.
We got this. Hey. First item on the agenda today is consider appointing a general manager. And right now, our recommendation is Chuck Kenny. Is there any comments or any direction from the board?
Move for approval.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
One more.
I apologize, Mark Kyris.
Yes.
Okay, six in favor. Chuck, you have a new title now. So we expect a lot out of you. Item B, consider appointing a general counsel. At this time, we have Diane Freeman is on the list, top of the list. Any comments or questions? Moved by Supervisor Nevs, I mean Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yeah.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Mark Kyris.
Yes.
Okay, six in favor. Welcome, Diane. At this time, we're ready to adjourn, but I could have a couple of statements I'd like to make. This has been unusual times here in Kings County. Anybody that's following this, but going on for 10 years, five years, a lot of hard work gone into it. You know, we have to give credit to Dennis Mills and his staff for putting a lot of work into it. We're going to accept all the work they did into our hands. I know there was a concern brought up by Mr. LaSalle about not having people of interest on the board. You know, I, I farm, everything I do affects me and every one of my friends. So that's important to me to make this, this last and protect agriculture for the future. Mid Kings GSA before with the Kings River Water District, they're key key element to make this work. I think Dennis Mills will have to focus on the surface water. We'll take care of the groundwater, and we'll work together to, to get this done. Anytime we have a wet year, we'll put as much water in the ground as we possibly can. We'll try to ease the limitations of pumping out of the ground. And there's a lot of, lot of hearsay, a lot of scrutiny. I know Mid Kings GSA is probably the best out of all of Kings County, I think, for groundwater. We just got to be careful what we do and not overpump, meet the requirements of the state. We got plenty of time to do that. We're in constant communication with the State Water Resource Control Board. I don't know if anybody showed up tonight. They were going to have someone come down, but I don't see anybody here this evening. But, you know, we're going to do a one-stop shop. We are the Board of Supervisors, along with the City Council of Hanford. We're not going to make the decisions. We're going to ask the community to come up with an ad hoc committee at a later date. And we're going to let you guys, we're going to have people with shallow wells, deep wells, surface water, no surface water, white areas, all come together with the guidelines the state gave us. And we'll vote on that to make it work for our community. We don't want to limit agriculture in our county. We need as much money as we can made from agriculture here in Kings County. I think 2022, we had $2.3 billion made here in agriculture alone. We need to improve upon that, not take it away. And so that's my goal. The next thing, I want to get off probation. Every dollar we pay to the state is money out of our pockets. So the sooner we get off probation, get a plan in place, you know, we got to put together a team, the people to work with you. I want a phone number that has access to every grower out here. One phone call, one-stop shop. We'll have someone on staff that will answer your questions and help guide you through this process. So that's my goal. I don't know if we had that before. I think it was, you know, kind of scattered out. No one knew where to go. Board of Supervisors is here every Tuesday at nine o'clock, and I don't know what day. Are we going to pick a day for our next meeting?
Yes, let's go ahead and pick a day for the next meeting, and then we can establish a regular.
Yeah, we're here every Tuesday morning, nine o'clock, but what, what do you think to be the best time to have a meeting here? Every third Wednesday, we're busy. So I would say maybe the second Wednesday of the month. Evenings, mornings? Tuesdays? Tuesdays at four o'clock in the afternoon? Sometimes it goes to three. I don't mean that.
Two o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
Two o'clock. Two o'clock's good.
Once a month, once a month. The next one will be a month from today?
Mr. Chair, I just, I just, you know, if I could, I, I like the idea, but I think.
They have their meetings on Tuesdays.
I think whatever day we pick, I don't think we want to wait four weeks to have the, the initial meeting, maybe a little sooner, maybe, just to kind of show the community that, you know, we're up to place and things are running and get things moving forward.
Okay. And I fear in two weeks, we have the 13th Board of Equalization at two o'clock. What time do your meetings start on Tuesday?
Depends. Our study sessions generally start at four, maybe five, but four is the earliest we start.
Maybe we should go one, start at one o'clock. Sometimes BOE meetings can go long if they're, if they're appeals.
We think. Let's set it for two, how long the Board of Equalization going to take on the 13th, you think?
Ten hours.
Ten minutes?
Right, we have several already scheduled. They've been on the calendar for 45 days.
How about we go to the 20th? Three weeks. 20th at two o'clock? Does that work for everybody? 20th at two o'clock, and we'll have it on Zoom, and just like we do a regular board meeting, it'll be online, so no one has to come in here. You can submit your questions ahead of time, and we don't have anything on the agenda yet to discuss, but it'll be our first meeting. We'll start forming it, get it to come together. My goal is to get off probation as soon as possible, so hopefully before Thanksgiving is my goal. Hopefully we make that happen. So Tuesday, the 20th at two o'clock will be our next meeting. Any questions from the board? Uh, so Tuesday, the twentieth at two o'clock will be our next meeting, any questions from the board?
Point of order, Chairman.
Michael.
I did receive a letter from Kings County Farm Bureau, that's why I was distracted earlier and I don't know.
I'm going to call after, after we get done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Chairman, I mean, Supervisor Valley, you got a question?
Uh, just, just quick, uh, columnist chairman, uh, good evening everyone, for those who don't know me. I just want to take a minute to introduce myself as well, Richard Valley, I represent District Two, Corcoran, Avonale, Kettleman City, Home Garden. Uh, served up here for the last sixteen years and getting ready to start another four-year term, so. Um, I do want anyone who's concerned to know that, um, you know, this body right here. Uh, these five board members work, uh, very hard and, and they're very professional, uh, gentlemen. And, um, we look forward to, uh, the challenges that was brought before us on here. Um, I'm speaking for myself, this isn't anything that we, uh, went down the road to go seek out, we have plenty of responsibilities. Um, but this is something that we'll take on with pride and, and, um. Def- definitely a measure of, uh, uh, effort and the attention that this topic deserves, so, um, going back sixteen years. Uh, worked with Governor Schwarzenegger, many trips to Sacramento, um, up and down the state lobbying during the droughts. The two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, um, I'm a member of the California Latino Water Coalition. We worked really hard and were major players in working with Schwarzenegger's administration to get the water bond on the ballot. And so on my end, I want you to know that I'm always available, but, um, I always take water very seriously, and as you know, last year. Uh, um, my hometown of Corcoran, we had plenty of water outside of our city limits, so had to deal with that. And, and getting past those challenges as well, so again, look forward to it, I entered this with the attitude. As Chairman Verboen pointed out, that, um, we're not here to be against the grain, we're here to work with you. And, um, get things, um, organized and calm so we can move forward, because obviously, as was stated. Uh, ag is the main economic engine that keeps this county going and is for the people in the front rows, our staff. They're very professional, the last thing I would ever call them is bureaucrats, because they live here and they care about this county. And, um, and, uh, they put a lot of attention to detail here, and so please, uh, uh, if you don't know them, get to know them, Mr. Kenny. Is very competent, I, he has a lot of duties, um, as is, and, um, this is going to be a challenge for him and I. And I got a lot of respect for him standing up, uh, to take this on, so with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Robinson, you got something to say? Something on your mind?
I just want to assure you, uh, this is not the tail wagging the dog, we are here to listen. So if you need us, we're here, pick up the phone. Call us, call our cell phone numbers, of course, there's going to be a channel, but, uh, we welcome any interaction that you have. Uh, we, we, we are not trying to impose things, we are trying to listen to you, all the segments, the various segments of the community, particularly ag.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I'd like to introduce, uh, Council Diane Freeman is here and, uh. You know, she's our, our lead attorney, she's not a water expert, but she can handle the day-to-day mundane stuff. But we have Jeffrey Dunn here from BBK, he drove down from Anaheim today just to be here this evening, if you had any questions, so he's a, if you Google his name, he's a high-powered groundwater, uh, attorney. And he takes on people like the city of Los Angeles and protects groundwater rights, so, uh, we have him on our side and he's here tonight, if you have any questions. Mark, you got anything you want to add to this?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I believe we have a comment from Dusty Ferentz from Farm Bureau, you want to come up, Dusty? Thanks for coming. He won't say something? Richard, you want to say something too?
No.
No, you sure? All right, Dusty, it's all yours.
Thanks for the time, uh, today's meeting was a little unorthodox and I didn't realize I should have commented at the beginning, I thought, uh, those comments were directed just at the GSA. Um, we wrote a letter to you guys, uh, we appreciate that, that the county has prevented this from becoming an undistricted area under stigma. Um, the, the restated JPA does raise a few concerns that we want to be on the record with. Uh, first of all, the even number Board of Directors, um, could create an issue where we have a tie. And just prolong decision-making, so that's troublesome. Um, really, the JPA could include seats outside of this governing body as adopted and, and from our perspective, should include some water users and, and growers on the board. Um, you stated, several of you stated, you know, that you intend to have a committee formed and, and take input from stakeholder advisory committees. Uh, but those committees lack a little bit of authority when they don't have a vote on the board, um, and that's a concern as well. And, um, lastly, I think in our letter, the, the concern that we spelled out was, um. The Community Development Agency being involved, we're, we're concerned there may be a conflict of interest there, the director will be responsible for approving, uh, new well permits. But he'll also be responsible for, um, signing off that they don't impact the Mid Kings River GSA. Um, all things that can be worked through and we hope to work through them with you, but want to, want to let you guys know that we do have some concerns.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I can address a little bit of that, comments public generally don't, but, uh. Yes, come forward, Mr. LaSalle. I know one thing I, I like to see in the future is, at, at the county would be a Water Natural Resources Committee. And that way, we have a one-stop shop for all growers to have someone to call to when they have questions on their GSA or their wells or anything. Uh, an expert on hand, full-time, so, uh, that's my goal when it's all said and done, but this is the beginning. Uh, we have room to add on to the board if we like to, and, uh, we just got to come together and tonight's the night we come together, so thank you, Mr. LaSalle.
Doug.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you and I go back a long way, um, I remember ten years ago, I was on the High Speed Rail Committee. And I was very proud of the Kings County Board of Supervisors, you guys showed courage. And you took on the state of California, I thought you did a hell of a job. And you won, you won at the trial court level. And. The Third District Court of Appeals reversed you, but you still had one card to play, you could have appealed to the State Supreme Court. And you kind of got weak knead on us and gave up your appeal rights. But. I always liked you, Doug, and.
You saying now you don't?
This meeting was getting started. You assured me, Mike, you don't have to worry about it, we're not going to take action tonight. Did you lie to me, Doug?
No.
Well, explain yourself.
Well, we just formed a committee and we're going to come up with a, our committee assignments next week, no.
I'm going to, I know you, at some point, you're going to adjourn this meeting, and I'm going to ask maybe some of the farmers to stay behind, because I think we need to have a meeting. There's a legal issue and there's a political problem here. And there are a lot of farmers in this area that are not going to be particularly happy with the action you've taken. First of all, I want to preserve for the record, one, I object to the action you took on grounds that you did not give. Proper legal notice to all known landowners. And number two, your administrative record is going to lack. Um, substantial evidence justifying what you did, okay? I know how this works, I've been down that road. I've done a lot of work in my professional career, going against Regional Water Quality Control Board, appealing. And I was involved in the high-speed rail action too, so. I hate to say that it's come to this, but damn it, you kind of. And I know you guys have all taken action, but do you really understand the political ramifications of what you've done here? Now, I know you've assured us, but words are cheap, Doug. And I think I learned tonight for the first time, you cannot be trusted. And I'm not sure we can trust the rest of you either, no matter what you said to us tonight, I don't feel real comfortable about this. Show you guys put on tonight. And I think the farmers that were here are taking note of that.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, you know, people, I know people, the laws, people can come say whatever they want at the podium, at the Board of Supervisors. We, we've gotten our earful over the time, um, so. It's pretty much short of, uh, starting a riot is about the, the only thing that you can't do in here, but what, what I. What I won't, what I won't take is a sense of threats, like telling the chairman, there's going to be a meeting. After the, you can't have a meeting after this, or you can go to a coffee shop or something, but you can't have another meeting in here, once we adjourn. It'd be against the law for you to think you're going to get a couple of board members and get a quorum together. And so just a sense of threat. Um, and, and, and speaking like that, again, you can be disrespectful all you want, but once it starts getting to a tone of a threatening level. Um. That, no, there's not, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, I'm saying that the other body, the other body got bullied. And then they dissolved, and then certain people who bullied them are now coming here and speaking and having, and having. And having, um, issues with what we have to do, again, we didn't go looking for this here. But we're going to, we're going to do our job and, and, um, and move forward that way. But again, the tone we start off with is to work with you, but, but when the, the, the tone of threat's not going to be taken here, that's at least on my end, thank you.
Thank you, we know who we work for, we work for, we work for you, we work for the farmers of the community, I don't work for the state of California, I don't work for the government. I work for the people, I live here, I go to dinner here, I hang out here, I farm here. I probably go to work before Michael LaSalle does, I probably work longer than he does, I probably have more acres than he does, so I'm probably more affected than most people in this room. And, uh, I'm fighting for my livelihood as well, so, um, you got that going for you, if, if you believe it or not. Uh, I have no interest in leaving this community, so, um. With that said, any other comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.